At this time, I'd like to welcome each of you to tonight's meeting, May the 2nd, 2022. At this time, would you please stand for a moment of silence and then we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. The school board meeting is officially called to order. Welcome to the May the 2nd, 2022 school board meeting on the Madison County School Board. The school board meeting is an advertised meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have an established advertised agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the school board may do so during the public input section of the meeting. You will have three minutes to address the board. The sign-in sheet to speak during public input is on the table to the left as you enter the boardroom. Please sign in if you wish to speak. Our school board minutes are being recorded this evening by Ms. Bishop, confidential secretary and secretary to the superintendent. Board members present are Ms. Williamson, Mr. Carroll, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Bell, and myself, Bart Offord. District staff members present, the superintendent, Ms. Joseph, and Ms. Reeves, the school board attorney. At this time, again, welcome to tonight's meeting. I am going to amend the agenda at this time. I'm pulling item 5.5. And I'm adding a 511, which will be a policy discussion of the payment of an individual coming out of the drop program. Some payouts with that. So I'm adding a 5.11 and I'm pulling 5.5. Okay, at this time, is there any comments from the public? No comments? Okay, 4.0 consent items. We have 4.1, the minutes from April the 18th impasse hearing, the minutes from the impasse hearing, and 419, 2022, our regular board meeting, those minutes. 4.2 cooperative service agreement with Florida State University concerning testing. Those are the two items under the consent items. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent items.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of the consent items. 5.1 personnel changes, Mr. Killensworth.
Mr. Killensworth is not here, but you have it for you, your personnel changes. We've got one resignation effective 4/29, and we had a leave of absence from 3/18 to 5/5/9. And we have one person that's been approved pending background check for substitute bus driver bus monitor.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I make the motion to approve personnel changes.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of personnel changes. 5.2 school volunteers.
Mr. Chair, your lists of approved school volunteers are presented to you as listed.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the school volunteers?
I move to approve the school volunteers.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of school volunteers. Okay, 5.3, the staffing allocation plan. Ms. Joseph.
Okay, Mr. Chair, a couple of updates to the staffing allocation plan on page five, midway down. To further, to more be descriptive of the position our MIS person, MIS student person did, we need to rename and reclassify that position as to curriculum network manager data. And so she, it could be more inclusive of the actual work that she's actually doing. And another change that you see on your staffing plan, the last page, I need you to remove. That's on page, on page 11, on the, on the S A A R P grant funded position. We've added the position, that last position, teacher on special assignment administrative transition. We're going to do away with that position after looking at the staff we have. We really don't need that position, so we're just going to scratch that.
Now, I don't have my pages numbered at all. I'm not sure where you're at.
It's at the very bottom.
It's the very last page, very last thing in that document.
Okay. All right. And what were you going to remove?
That very last position, teacher on special assignment. I was asking to add that as a grant funded position, but I don't want, I changed my mind about that. Looking at our needs and looking at the staffing that we have, we really, that's not going to fit our needs. And so I'm actually making one change to the staffing allocation table, which is changing that at the district personnel to curriculum network manager data.
And Ms. Joseph, where will they be paid at?
That's a general fund. That position was already being paid out of general fund. It's just a bit more descriptive of what they actually, their duty is.
But what are they, what line, I mean, where are they being paid at? Is it?
Okay, that's going to be a curriculum, it's going to be a teacher, at a teacher level, at a teacher pay level.
And the other question I have is concerning with our, are we on top of the enrollments that we're as close to where we should be with the numbers and staffing?
We're as close as what we have predicted. We on top of that, we're looking at it every day, and we haven't seen much movement.
Is there, do we, do we find out when, when people were to leave? When would we find that? Do we find out before school starts or?
Are you talking about the staff?
Children.
Children. And when you say leave, what do you mean?
Like maybe transfer either to another school or out of district or?
It comes randomly. I think we, we should know who's going to the charter school. Do we know that yet? Okay. We've accounted for those numbers.
Right. We, we usually approve for the open controlled enrollment request about a week before school starts so that we see what the numbers look like.
And so we should know, even if for ones going homeschool or private school, we should know maybe by the time school's out. So where if we have, so if we have teachers who maybe were to resign, if we had to like step back and not hire, or, or if you had, where you had a need where you were going to have less students than what you thought, we would maybe still have time where we could?
Right now, we're, we're, we're going to have lots of open positions.
So we don't, we don't have to worry about?
I wouldn't think so because we were short this year.
Okay.
Okay. Now, can we, if necessary, can we go back and readdress this though? Address this again, the staffing plan?
You can always readdress.
You know, I mean, later on, you know, in the summer and, okay.
If we were to have an influx of students or?
We allocate staff to stu, to schools according to the projected enrollment.
Do we, Ms. Hill, do we know at this time, like, how many people we're short of staff? Like, what are our needs?
We, based off of resignations, retirements, just letters of request to transfer, for K to 5, we're looking at probably needing district-wide, 12 to 14 teachers, which is pretty, pretty normal. And then middle school, I think we're looking for maybe three, and high school, maybe two.
So maybe less than 20? Less than 20 total?
Right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions concerning the staffing allocation? So in, in removing the transition administrator, that would free up that money that could be used to something else?
Yes.
That's the teacher on special assignment.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion concerning the staffing allocation plan?
I move to approve the staffing allocation with the elimination of the teacher on special assignment, the administration transition.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion, further discussion? If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of the staffing allocation plan. 4.5.4, summer schedule.
Okay, Mr. Chair, again, I'm bringing to you, during the summer, we normally work four-day work weeks, and so I, I want to present that to the board, that our summer work week, four-day work week, will begin May 30 through July 28. And our, our 12-month employees, their hours of work will be 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon, with a 30-minute lunch and two 50-minute breaks. That's four days of 10 hours each session, 40-hour work week. And our instructional time will be from 7:45 to 2:45.
That's the time for the summer school?
That's the time for the summer school. Teachers and students will be from 8:00 to 2:30. 8:00 to 2:00.
And how, summer school goes from the 1st of June till?
June 6 through?
First session is June 6. We've went from first three weeks, and the second session finishes July 5 through the 23rd, which is also three weeks.
And who's eligible?
For summer school? We are just doing third grade summer mini camp, and credit recovery for early graduation.
Can you draw us in?
Yes, I can.
Are there any other questions concerning the summer schedule? If there's not, is there a motion to approve the summer schedule?
I move to approve the summer schedule.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there any further discussion?
The buses, no, still run some, you know?
We will have bus service, but it will probably be more of a vicinity rather than door-to-door.
Right, right. Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, not all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of the summer schedule. Okay, 5.6 instructional recommendations.
Okay, again, Mr. Chairperson, what you have in front of you are your instructional recommendations. What we've done, compiled, some of these people are 10 months, some 11 months, some 12 months, but they're all classified as instructional. And when they are not being assigned to a specific location, they are being recommended back instructional to work in Madison County School District.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the instructional recommendations?
I made the motion to approve the instructional recommendation for the 22-23 school year.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the instructional recommendations, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of the instructional recommendations. Okay, 5.7 non-instructional recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we use the same concept. We recommend any persons back in different categories, but not locations. But I need to make a change on the second part of your recommendation where you support bus drivers. They have Archie Strickland and Scott Weagle listed as substitutes. We are not recommending them as substitute drivers, they're regular drivers. And so that just need to be removed.
The word sub-driver?
Yeah, just sub-drivers, just the word sub-driver need to be removed. But everything else is, is fine. And we've got one person name, a couple person names, we've got one person name in two different places. I need to understand what's going on. For example, for a bus driver, Patrick Brown is a bus driver, but bus driver is a full-hour position, and he's also listed down as maintenance. And so, again, that's, and that's why he's part-time down there. Four hours is full-time for your bus driver. And so that's why he's not listed part-time, and that's why he's listed both places, but he's not scheduled for more than eight hours per day.
And did you say there was no sub-driver? What was that?
We're not, we do not hire sub-drivers. They're floating drivers, but sub-drivers, they're as needed.
Okay.
Okay? But these guys working, they, they just do not have a standard route, but they're full-time drivers.
Okay.
They know that, right?
Yes. Archie, I don't know why, that was out there by his name anyway. He has his own route.
Right.
Okay, is there any other questions concerning the non-instructional? If not, is there a motion to approve the non-instructional recommendations?
I made the motion to approve the non-instructional recommendations for the 22-23 school year without the sub-drivers being placed there, but because they're full-time drivers.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Carroll. It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval of the non-instructional recommendations. 5.8 fundraisers, and actually, this is asking for donations to be made to, for the senior walk through the schools.
I think she's also asking for a donation from each of you.
Right, well.
And she will be sending, she's sending out to schools and different businesses, and we will send it to each school. But that's some tradition that we started a few years back, having a senior walk. And Ms. Richard has so graciously agreed to spearhead this. And so what we do, we take all the seniors in the district on a bus and go around to each school, and walk through the halls with our cap and gowns, and end it with a nice little picnic, which we need funds for.
So we can give the donation to Ms. Richard?
You can give to Ms. Richard, either Ms. Bishop.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the fundraiser?
I move to. I move to approve the fundraiser.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion? If there's none, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. All those in favor of the fundraiser request, show a hand, please. Five O Ms. Bishop for approval. Okay, the next item is the out-of-district field trips. We have, the first one is the district STEM challenge winners to the Florida Caverns in Marianna on May the 6th, 2022. The second field trip request is Lee Elementary's first grade to Ms. Maltzby's home. It's 33 students and two teachers. The third field trip is Lee Elementary kindergarten to Live Oak Bowling. That's May the 13th. There's 35 students from 9:30 to 2:00 p.m. They'll return. Field trip for Greenville Elementary, grades three through five will be attending the Tallahassee Museum. 49 students, four chaperones, it's from 8:30 to 2:30. Also, on 5/19 to the Tallahassee Museum would be Panella Elementary's fifth grade, and it's 25 students and four chaperones. And the other field trip we had is a, the track team, MCHS track team to Panama City on May the 5th for a competition. There will be 15 students and two chaperones. And the, they're leaving, the departure time is 7:00 a.m., and return time to school was around 11:00 p.m. that day.
That's the region or the district, right?
Yes, I don't know which one it is.
I think they call them regions now instead of districts.
They, they don't have it on the request, Mr. Carroll. They just have track. Okay, is there a motion to approve the field trip request?
I move to approve the field trip, out-of-district field trip request.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second? It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carroll. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Is there any further discussion?
Lots of interesting, fun field trips there.
A lot, yes ma'am. Um, any further discussion? If not, um, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, five point ten, five point ten. Um, the updates to joint use agreement, Ms. Joseph.
Okay, uh, at the last board meeting, we, it was noted that we, um, that, um, form needed to be updated. We heard you, okay? Thank Ms. Bishop, she's changed that also. And looking at the economy these days, uh, she got with Mr. Rayneck, and the fees have changed. Okay, uh, because this year is almost upon us, and we started this year, when, when we're asking for these, for this new form, these new fees to be effective, um, Ju- July one. Now, uh, with the price of gas keep going crazy, we may have to bring that back to you because we don't want to, we don't want to rob anybody, but we don't want to go too far in the hole. And we hoping this will cover the cost of the gas and transportation. And we have updated the transportation supervisor's name and address.
We, um, probably should, um, keep a constant eye on that with the way gas and diesel is going up. So, I mean, maybe it'll come back down and we wouldn't have to charge as much, but while it's going up, we're gonna have to keep an eye on it, or we're gonna be further in the hole in transportation.
Yep.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the update of the joint use?
I move to approve the update, joint use agreement.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the update to the joint use agreement. Um, five point eleven, um, the policy discussion of payout of an individual, um, coming out of the drop program concerning, um, some sick time and vacation time.
Do you want to start or do you want to start?
Okay.
Mr. Reeves. Okay, uh, what we have before is, uh, Ms. Smith recently, um, retired during drop, am I correct? Okay, um, and she's leaving some time on the books. The question at hand is that she's leaving some hours on the book. And when I say hours, I mean sick leave and vacation time. Looking at state statute, it says, once you're getting dropped, you have officially retired. And she was paid out at the end of, um, so she ended her drop for her vacation time. Okay, state policy says, state statute says, once you enter drop, you're paid out. Uh, one of the papers I've given you are specifically states. Annually, employers will earn annually during drop, okay? Annually accumulated during drop participation will not be paid to the employee at the end of drop except to the extent the employee has earned additional leave combined with the original payment. But basically, she was paid out for the allocated two hundred and forty hours. I think the question to you is, do you go against statute and pay her for these additional hours or not?
The.
Because she, she had been paid, and that was for the annually, we, we deal with annual leave and sick leave. And do you want to deal with?
She was paid the annual leave. It's the sick leave you're looking at.
The national, the, um, maximum two hundred and forty hours of annual leave. And state statute says, anything you earn after that, and you, you haven't used, we leave it on the books. And question to you is, do, do we go against state statute and pay it whatever we decide? That's your decision.
The, the two forty was what is the district's policy?
That's the district's policy.
But I'm not sure that was the number when she entered drop.
Uh, that was policy, it was in two thousand seventeen that the district, uh, paid everybody off for two hundred and seventeen hours and cut you off regardless, okay? Because at that time, I had more than two hundred and forty hours. They paid everybody off and cut them off. You cannot have more than two hundred and forty hours. That's your policy in your policy book.
But that's, that's not really the issue. The issue is the sick time, and I don't know that we have anything.
She's got, uh, sick and, um, and leave.
But the annual, this, the annual is right after two forty. This is sick, that's four twenty-three.
This is an addition of two forty. The two forty, she's been paid for two forty. She's accrued another two forty. So do you pay again for another two forty? Because she's been paid for the two forty one time.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Ms. Smith, would you, would you ever pay?
You want to see my papers that I have?
No, when I went into drop, I had only been here four years, and I didn't get paid any vacation because I had to take vacation the whole time we go camping, so I didn't get paid any vacation. I got paid a few hours sick leave and left the rest of the sick leave on the books in case I got sick and had to be out. I didn't get paid any vacation when I went into drop because I didn't have much vacation. And my teachers every year would stay for four weeks on weekend block. I never got paid any vacation. It was sick.
That's the record right there, and, um, I mean, the lady, the bookkeeper, the finest person told me that was vacation, vacation time.
It just said special break. It was, oh, special day. It was my sick.
Okay.
I, I only been here four years. I always accumulated four days, days, but I had too much of them because I can say I, I do take my vacation every job. I don't miss for sick reasons, but I do take vacations on weekend block.
Yes, I, so you, you gotta remember where, where we were, um, when, when drop came in. You had the ability to, before drop, you got paid out for your vacation, so if according to board policy, you don't necessarily get paid out for all of it, but you get paid out for whatever's in board policy when you, uh, stop working for the district, right? Then we get drop in, and so they create drop. That was, and I don't remember exactly when they created drop. It wasn't, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, anyway.
Twenty.
Um, when they created drop, what they started doing was by statute, they would allow you to get paid out for your vacation at the time, the annual leave at the time you entered drop. The point of that was, that was calculated into your final compensation, and by allowing you to do that, your, your, uh, retirement payment was increased. Does that make sense? Because when they calculate out your retirement payment, it's based on your compensation. So what the statute said was, with annual leave, you, the agency came up with a total amount, which I think they're saying, and, and uh, the superintendent is saying in this case is two hundred and forty hours. And so you've got a total of two hundred and forty hours between both the payment when you enter drop and the payment, uh, if there was a payment at the end of drop. So if you got paid out your two forty at the beginning of drop, you didn't get paid out any at the end. If you got paid out two twenty when you entered drop, you got twenty at the end, if you had accrued it but not used it. And, and so that was the, the way that worked with annual leave. Now, there's, there's really not a good reason that I know of. I know lots of agencies, and by agencies, I mean governmental entities in Florida retirement system, allow you to be paid out your sick leave when you enter drop. I'm not aware of a good reason to do that, because that sick leave is not supposed to be calculated into the, your Florida retirement system contribution in any event, okay? But some do that, and I think they either misunderstand, or they, they don't understand, and they include the sick in what they send to the Division of Retirement for figuring out that final contribution. So your, your, the statute and your policy, which is, um, what is it? Uh, one-four-two-oh-point-oh-one, uh, on annual leave, say the exact same thing, which is, we have a set amount. You get paid out that total number of hours between entering drop and when you leave drop, and no more. So if you got paid out two forty, earn another two forty, you don't get paid another two forty. Does that make sense? And, and so, so what we gotta do is, we've gotta go back and calculate and see what was actually paid out, and then whatever's not been, and Kathy, do you have two forty now?
It's on the bottom.
Two forty.
So, so we need to go back and recalculate and make sure that you've been paid out your two forty. Um, so whatever, and, and I don't, I mean, I can't read this. I don't know what it means. But, and I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't. And, and so we gotta figure that out, and she's gotta be paid her two forty total. If you were paid vacation at the beginning, that gets deducted off, and that's that. Now, in your sick, it's a little bit different. I don't really understand, um, that this, this is kinda hard to read, what we've got here on the benefits payable on sick leave. Because what it says on B is, okay, it says, uh, sick leave will be earned during drop as prescribed by Florida statutes. Accumulated sick leave earned during drop participation will not be paid to the employee at the end of their drop participation or as prescribed in any board-approved alternative retirement plan. So that seems like you don't get paid out what you earn during drop. And then C says, but C's different, and it says, it is the intent of the policy, individual entering drop will be allowed to use sick leave, which was accrued during their retirement and interest to drop. The procedures for utilization of such leave shall be as follows. Well, maybe that's not a conflict. That, that, that seems to say that, but you gotta, it says the value of the sick leave will be computed according to salary established at the time of entering drop program, et cetera. So that seems to say you're not gonna get paid out for sick leave, but then it allows you to be paid out at the beginning of drop. So you're, Kathy, you're saying you, you were, you were paid out for some sick?
I was paid out some of it, but the policy says you can use it or lose it.
Sure.
But because the previous superintendent put me on special assignment and moved me to benefits because of the workload, I, I had about seven months sick leave on the books, so I couldn't miss that much work.
Sure.
And past practice, like I say, is that she can use it. And I put a debt in October and got paid for it on May thirty-first and never walked back in the building, but because no one was there to do my job, you know, I couldn't take it, and but we paid out four others that were under the same policy I was under for that same reason. And I'm just saying that what's good for one is good for another, and I, I'm a dedic-, I was a dedicated employee.
Well, sure.
To pay the work, even when I didn't feel good and during my father's passing away and my daughter having cancer and stuff like that, and
Sure.
I, I, I came to work. That's what I'm an employee that I am, and I wasn't allowed to use it because of my workload. And that's all I'm, I'm just trying to be treated fair. That's all I'm having.
And, and I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense with annual leave, because yeah, you got the right to take that, but now sick leave, you don't really have the right to take unless you're sick. So I, I don't, you, you're saying they allow people to voluntarily stay out and just draw their sex?
Yeah, and that policy was changed last July, that you could only be out three days, and then you had to have a doctor's notice, well.
But, okay.
Have, have we ever done it before?
We have.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done it before. I mean, you know, what's good for one, it's good for the other.
We can start fresh from today.
That's what I, I mean, that's.
The question that I'm asking, uh, uh, when we interpret the state statutes, if we go against it, I need you to vote on it and put it in the books, that you're going against state statute. I just wanna know, are we going against state statute? Because in order to automate, I need to be able to show why I went against state statutes.
Well, do whatever we did in two thousand and twenty, because we did it in there, there.
Right. Okay, again, what, what is state statute at this point, right now?
When was it put in place?
State statute's been in place.
So if we did it two years ago.
The policy or state statute?
But if we did it for one, we could do it for her because she worked just as hard. She made up her time. And if we paid it out in two, twenty twenty, we should do it again.
Okay, again, do we go against state statute? We, we're talking two different things. Do we go against state statute?
Do we go against state statute in twenty twenty?
We might have. And am I getting rid of that part? Yes.
Kathy, can I say that the, the statute only deals with annual leave. It doesn't, that deal with sick leave.
That's what I want to do.
So I think we, the first thing we need to do is figure out, has she been, has Kathy been paid out any, any annual leave? If she's been paid out any annual leave, you deduct that from two forty and pay, then pay the difference on the annual. That's, that's how, and, and regardless of whether we paid somebody incorrectly in the past, that's not a good reason that you can deviate from statute when y'all finally find out about it.
But we can't do, I'm not, for, one year we do it, one year we don't, one year we do it, one year you don't, depending on who the people are.
The, the board, though, has to decide based on what's being presented to the board. So if, if what happened was an employee went to a CEO or a superintendent, and they did something, and it wasn't ever presented to the board, y'all aren't gonna be able to.
It wasn't presented, and it was more than one.
Okay, but you have to, and my opinion is, you have to follow the statute. And I don't think there's any controversy with the statute. The statute says two hundred and forty hours of vacation time of annual leave.
But the sick is, doesn't.
The sick is the issue, and you've got, um, and I don't, you know, the, the sick doesn't say you're gonna pay out. I, I don't think under any circumstances it says you're gonna pay out a hundred percent. I mean, this one says, it's got percentages. It says the, um.
Where, where I think it may get cloudy, Mr. Reeves, is back during that time for that individual, um.
This is the same.
Yeah.
They were paid out.
Okay.
And, and I, and I, I personally think from, we need to make it where it's clear in the policy, because it's, it's really not very clear of what is gonna be paid out for sick.
Okay.
But again, since she's already been through it, and she went into drop years ago when it was, when this policy wasn't even about, uh, I mean, I, I feel with the sick that we should pay out. Just, just based upon, we've paid out with others, and it's, it's not something clear spelling it out there, in my opinion. I don't.
All right, can the policy be written where we can understand it or whoever can understand it better?
Sure.
And, and I'd like to go ahead and go along with what you said, Mr. Alfred and Ms. Bell. But from this day forth, let's make it perfectly clear, and so there's no questions about anything.
I'd like to say that these policies were presented on September, uh, July twentieth to the board. Okay, for advertisement. It was brought back to the board on September eighth. My question is, I'm, I'm not making this personal. You're making it personal. I wanna know what policy do we follow? When you learn, you may make mistakes, but do you keep making mistakes when you learn better? And I'm, I'm asking the attorney for clarification of the policy, and when I first brought this up, I said, let's, uh, take it in two issues. That's why I said, let's talk about annual, let's talk about sick. But then we tried to, but we, it's two different situations. And so what does the statute say about annual leave? How are we gonna deal with that? What does the statute, and this is my question, what does the statute say about, uh, sick leave, and how do we deal with that? Not what we did in the past. Uh, I, I'm one of the first one to say, I've made mistakes. But do you keep making mistakes?
I agree with you, but I think that she's already, was almost to the end of her journey. And that, that is what I'm gonna look at, because you say you brought it to her in September, and that may be true.
And you read it, and then you approved it.
That may be true. It still need to be corrected to the point that we understand it a little better, but she was almost to the end of her journey. So she couldn't go back and change that. So I feel like it's more than right to give her what she had worked for and then, I mean, her time.
I'm not agreeing with that, but the stat, the statute was in place then. The statute was always been in place.
I understand that.
Okay, the statute hasn't changed.
So, so I think if that's what y'all are wanting to do, I think you need to, uh, do a motion on the second, direct the superintendent.
But, but what, let me clarify, what you're saying is, um, we're gonna have staff look at the annual time to see if she's been paid the two forty, and then we're looking at the sick leave would be the other, the other aspect. And if she has been paid the two forty, then there'd be no more payment there, but the sick leave would be.
So it would be, you, the, the total amount, I think Ms. Smith can be paid for the, uh, for her annual leave is two hundred and forty total, including what she's already been paid for annual leave, and that's gotta be figured out. I, I, I don't, just sitting here, we can't figure that out. And then I think y'all direct us on what you want to pay out on the sick leave.
Ms. Smith, when, did you understand exactly what, did you understand that you was not gonna get paid the sick leave?
gonna get paid the sick leave?
Yes ma'am, I did, but it also said I could use it or lose it and I wasn't...
You couldn't use it because you, you had to stay in your position.
Right. I mean, somebody had to do the work every day and then I could say, there was others that got paid for the same thing, sick and vacation that went and dropped and left like I did and didn't get a chance to use it and they got paid for it.
Right. I think we have to look at too, that Ms. Smith and a few other people that we have in our district is the only person that can do that job. For, I mean, you know, somebody else can learn it, but I'm talking about for her to be gone a month, then who does insurance for a month? There's so much to, I mean, you can't, she can't be gone a month.
The, and board, you are the board, I am not the board. I've given you my advice. You may do what you wish, but what you're describing, Ms. Williamson, is a good reason to write a different rule. It's not a good reason to ignore the rule you got. So if y'all want, I mean, y'all tell us what to do and we'll do it, but that's the, I, if, if you had found out today that the past ten years, everybody that's gotten, that's left, has been paid out a hundred percent of their sick from time immemorial, that, in my opinion, is not a good reason to deviate from your policy. You're required to follow your policies. That said, if you all feel like you need to do it that way, we'll, we'll do it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here saying you can't do it. I'm saying that my advice is you have to follow your policies, okay? And I, I would also think, whatever you do, you need to instruct us to go ahead and redraft the policies at this time to handle it.
Exactly. Make it very clear.
And my recommendation would be, don't pay people out for their sick time at the beginning of drop. There's no good reason to do it other than everybody else is doing it.
And I, and I can agree with that, but it, it needs to be clear.
Right.
And they need to know when they go in drop clearly. No misinterpretation, no whatever. So we need to rewrite the policy and ask people in a drop, this is what it is. And that's not the situation we have to do.
We paid Neola to write this policy, so we need to...
It needs to be cleared up. I mean, make it plain. It's not plain enough.
Y'all gotta have to give me some help on this, 'cause this is what we paid Neola to do. And y'all approved the policy of what's written when it was presented to you.
We, we can do that. So what's, what's the recommendation, I mean, what are, if we, if we change what Ms. Williamson's asking for, do we need to decide that tonight?
A policy obviously has to be advertised, all that kind of stuff. In my opinion, if you're gonna, to change your policy, you've got fourteen twenty point oh one is deferred retirement option program that should drop.
One is for administrators, one is for instructional, another is non-instruction. That's why you have three different policies.
The, the way I would change it is that piece that says benefits payable sick leave is I would just change that to say, "No sick leave shall be payable upon entering drop." I'd have that one sentence. Because there, the, the logic is not there. The, the reason you let people be paid out vacation time is that's calculated into their, into their retirement, so there's a good reason to let them be paid out their vacation time at the beginning of drop. It ups their retirement payment. Letting them pay it out sick is just, it, it, there's not, it doesn't follow the same logical reasoning.
So then just get paid out the sick when you actually leave?
When you actually leave. Now, another option, and we had talked about this years ago, I say "we," me and the board, and, you know, that's a lot, I'm sure Barton and maybe Suzie was. But if y'all went to a system where you had, did not have separate annual and sick and just had personal days, a hundred percent of those can be calculated in for drop. But if you have a separate annual and, and sick days, only the annual can be calculated in for drop.
I've got a question. If we add this sentence, "No sick leave will be payable upon entering drop," do we say effective for any person entering drop at a specific date and then everybody else will be grandfathered in on scale?
Yeah, I mean...
I would think so, because some of them's already, you know, it's already been done.
How many folks we have in drop right now?
I cannot tell you that. I haven't found that here.
Yeah. I, I think what you'd say is, as of the effective date of this, of the change that you're gonna do, anyone entering in a drop after that date does not get it, their sick leave paid out upon entering drop.
Ms. Hill, do you know how many people we got in drop?
That's curriculum.
One more, Angie. You first.
So the, the sick leave would be instead paid out at the end of drop?
Right.
And so would we need to look at the amount or...
We, I believe we already have the policy saying, limiting the amount, don't we?
Uh, sick leave doesn't have, huh? No, 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 no. Is it a maximum number of hours you can accrue in sick, in sick leave? I know it's vacation time. It's not a maximum.
I didn't see an amount.
There's, there's an amount and it's based on the group service. You get thirty-five percent at X number of years. After thirteen years, you get a hundred percent.
Of everything? But, but I'm saying, of all the years, you get a hundred percent? Okay, so that, that's why, okay, well, that would make sense on letting people take it out. If they're gonna get paid a hundred percent, fine, let them, let, let them go ahead and use it even without being sick. But the problem is, if, if all we're gonna get was, say, thirty-five percent of their sick leave paid out, it wouldn't make sense to let them use it, because then they're, they're, they're using time they wouldn't otherwise be entitled to.
So the, the percent that we have in there would be a pay for it to say?
Yeah, and I think that's actually set out in the statute. I think you've got a, a statute that sets statutory maximums on the per year and everything, and y'all would need to look at that. But I don't think you need to look at that for drop. I think drop...
The percent's in here.
So Mr. Reeves, did it start, like, when the policy is advertised and we change it, that's when it would start for the people that are not grandfathered in? Is that what you're saying?
You all can decide to do it that way. That would be my recommendation, to say, let's say people enter and drop after you begin this won't get paid out.
I think that would be the fairest way to do it, that you're not springing, I mean, if, if I had entered drop and then had that spread on me, that's not fair for the person who's affected. I don't feel it is anymore.
So do we go back and pay the people that have not received their funds when they left without getting all the money? Some people left last year with some time on the books. Do we go back and pay them?
How many people that?
I, I, I try to stay in my lane. That wasn't in my lane, but I do know some people left with some time on the books, and we've got several people that's leaving issue of times on the books.
Then they need to get paid too. That's my opinion, if we're gonna... That's just my opinion.
And if, if we have been doing that, I mean, if we did it for, I mean, I don't see what made it, and I know that we're talking about this case, but if precedent has been set a few years ago, where we did it for a group of people, then what made it so special that we did it for that group then and not other groups? I don't understand that. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I'm gonna say we need to rectify this problem.
Well...
I mean, and, and that's what we're gonna do by changing the policy.
Okay.
Exactly. How are we changing the policy? Exactly what are we doing? Can we summarize that for vacation time? Pay a maximum, a hundred, two hundred and forty hours if she haven't paid, if she haven't received two hundred and forty hours pay, pay the balance. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
Okay, and what do we say about sick leave?
For the, the total amount of that is what I'm understanding from the board. Is that what?
That's right. Somebody make a motion.
Okay, so we need to, we need, first off, we need a motion relating to what was just said, and then we'll go back to concerning changing the policy. We'll do a second motion.
How do we reference this motion in relationship to the state policy, state statute?
I, I think you're gonna, you're gonna say a motion dealing with Ms. Smith's issue and then you're gonna tell us about the, the policy, right?
Okay. What the state statute fit in here?
The, the state, if I'm understanding right, our, our policy says two hundred and forty hours of annual. They're saying pay out two hundred and forty of annual. That's gonna comply with the statute.
That's, that's complies with the statute.
That's right. They can, the sick time, the statute doesn't address it.
Okay.
And so that, okay. So what I would do is, if, if that's what y'all are wanting to do, do a motion to go back and, and recalculate the amount of sick time that Ms. Smith's been paid and pay out any sick time she has above that amount up, up to a total of two hundred and forty hours. So what she's been paid plus what she's gonna be paid would equal two hundred and forty hours.
That's, that's the annual time, right?
Okay, is there a motion to recalculate the annual time to pay her out two, two forty and then to pay out her sick time?
I'll move to approve to recalculate Kathy Smith's two hundred and forty hours of annual leave plus the sick time.
Plus paid one hundred percent of the sick time.
Is that a hundred percent?
Hundred percent.
Yep.
Can I say, I'll only get forty-five percent.
No, no, that's the rate you get paid, but you get paid for one hundred percent of the hours.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Bell, I'm sorry, I'm, mine just went. Any further discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval. The next item concerning the policy, is there a motion to...
And I think all you can do today is start the process.
To advertise.
To advertise a change, and the change would be on the several rules we have dealing with the drop program to delete payment of sick leave at the beginning of the drop process upon entering.
Do I need a motion to treat all employees since two thousand and twenty in the same amount?
If that's what y'all are wanting to do, yes.
'Cause that motion is just for her. Everybody else would have to follow this, the, the present policy. So is that motion just for her for everybody else that is applicable too?
Y'all, y'all do need to decide what to do with that. You might wanna wait and get a list of, like, who all that affect and all that before making that decision. You know, see how many people you're talking about and all that.
That motion you just made only applies to her. If we have somebody else in that same situation, do we, do we have to bring them back individually or what?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I, 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 I mean, I think, I mean, the president will sit back whenever. I think, I think, I think that, you know...
I, I mean, I personally would rather not even see the names, so we don't even, I mean, you don't know. I mean, the bottom line is, back at that point, it was manipulated with and done for that person.
If it was done in two thousand and twenty, that's just last year and this year.
Right.
Since then, after this precedent was set. So if there's anybody else, we'd pay them too.
I mean, I, I personally would rather not see names, so people can't say, "Well, you chose this person over that person." It would just be fair to do that. And again, I just hate that, that it even, that that initially got through like it did. I mean, it's not right. If it wasn't supposed to be done, then it shouldn't have been done back then. I don't know how the others feel about it.
I feel the same way.
So do we want, do we want it included from two thousand and twenty on all the people that it would have affected that's in the drop that had? Okay, so do we need a motion for that, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir. I think you need a motion and I, but we're just talking about the ones that are, that are presently in drop, right?
The ones that have been in drop, yeah. We only talk about drop people.
Right.
The ones, it says two twenty, two thousand and twenty, that have been through drop and never liked getting paid, or we've got some people at the end of this year.
Yeah, you could, you could have, you could have, like, a teacher at Lee that's, I'm not calling her name out, that's retiring and in drop. I mean, she could be affected. We could have other people affected and we need to look at all of them. I mean, it's not just...
And then what about the, and then the ones who went out on drop last year and maybe didn't get paid this way, would you send them a check?
Right, well, only if they deserve a check.
Okay. Tell us if they deserve a check. That's, that's, I guess, the way.
We're just not gonna send people checks.
Right.
But I mean, if they meet the...
Meet the criteria.
I mean, if they were left out, then I think you should...
If they had any sick leaves left. Some people used all their sick leave, so we're not even sure they had any sick leaves left. Sick leave, no.
So do we need a mo, my question is, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
From two thousand and twenty to...
Until we get the policy amended.
Okay, is there a motion to go back from two thousand and twenty until the policy is amended to include any people who would meet the sick leave that still had additional sick leave that weren't paid out?
I, I move to approve the, to go, to go back to two thousand and twenty, to those who meet the criteria, 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 up until now that we, to pay them. Have I got it straight?
Until we come up with a policy.
Until we come up with a, a new policy. Yeah, okay.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Williamson. Is there any further Okay, if none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval of going back from two, to two thousand and twenty until the policy, the new policy is set for looking at sick leave for drop participants. Okay, do we, the next motion will be to, we need to start the advertisement of...
We gotta get the policy written before we can bring it to you, then we advertise. Don't advertise it yet. Let's start, let's get it written.
Okay, well, we need to put in there what we want in there.
Uh, what I have so far, are you satisfied with the part that has, that deals with vacation
I am.
The two hundred and forty hours?
Well, that's...
I'd be up two, right? That's up two.
The, the, what y'all have to decide dealing with annual leave is the total number of hours you're willing to pay out. And that's not even in these drop policies. That's in a different policy. And y'all decided that's two hundred and forty hours. So if you wanna increase or decrease that, that would be an issue. But otherwise, your, your policy today follows state statute. On annual leave, it follows the statute. It says, whatever total amount y'all decide, they can get paid out that total amount between the drop payment and the leave-in payment. So I, I don't think you need to change the annual leave or the drop at all. What I would do is where it says benefits payable sick leave, I would just add, "Employees will not be paid terminal pay for accumulated sick leave upon election to participate in drop," and then just leave it alone. And then that way, when they, when they go to, when they leave drop and they terminate their service, they would be paid out like they, this, they, they would be paid out the same whether they'd enter drop or not.
Does that include if they were to, I mean, is terminated by death? Does that stay in there?
Well, you, you've got other rules that say how you get paid out for your sick leave. This is how you're especially dealing with drop. And, and so what you're saying is that the drop is not gonna make it be paid out. That's not gonna affect the fact that if you otherwise retire or whatever, you get paid out for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, so, so we, we want that sentence in there, no, sick leave should be, shall be paid out upon entering drop.
Yes.
As of the effective date of when it's finalized.
When it's final approved. Uh, that's the reason I get that back to the board.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Um, no, 'cause that's, that's gotta come back to a public hearing.
Okay. Well, that concludes the items of individual consideration. Six point one, superintendent item.
Superintendent item today is, not this week, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. I'd like to tell our teachers, we appreciate all the hard work that you do and thank you for your service. Also, the FSA continues this week. They were at it hard this morning and good luck to all the students that's finished this year with a bang. And also in front of you, I have put a list of interview dates of different activities that leads to the schools. I need you to know, that's a work in progress. I need you to know, that's a work in progress. Uh, it may change, we'll keep you updated as different things are added to the list.
Yes ma'am, the, um, G E S is, um, the same day as muffins with mom, G E S is going to have their muffins for moms that same day. On May the sixth. I just wanted to put that, that's what people know.
Is it in there?
Huh?
Is it in there?
No, nothing.
We put everything on the list that the principals gave us.
Okay.
It's right here. It's on May the sixth, so.
That's going to be, okay.
The principals put, uh, the principals puts things on that list.
We use smoke signals, agree? Y'all didn't, y'all didn't look out the window, you use smoke signals.
We, we made a Glock man that can be shared, and we actually put your items on there because the school board members want to know what's going on in their time of manner. And so that's what we're giving to you right now. Um, not saying it's, it's Ashton Stone, but as of today, it's Ashton Stone. It may change tomorrow. Uh, also Friday, they're having, Farm Bureau is having Ag Day at the Central School. And what grade is that for?
Fourth grade.
All fourth grades in the district will be there. And it's been a well, uh, represented program, well-presented program in past years, and they look forward to it. But it's going to be in the gym at Central School and on that football field behind there. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williamson, anything? Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Reeves?
No, sir, no, unless you have questions.
No, sir. And Ms. Williamson?
I do want to thank all of our teachers, and this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we do appreciate them. And, um, thank you for the list of all the events. Will we get another one with times?
Uh, we will, if that's what you would like. That's, we asked the teachers to fill it out, and that's what they put down, but we will ask them for time.
Right, because I mean, like the awards-
I understand.
And awards and things like that, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just like to wish all the students luck with the testing. I know that's big time these days, I'd wish them luck and, uh, you know, appreciate all the teachers and the parents, everybody really, but, you know, it's that, it's that, it's their week this week, so appreciate them.
Yes, I'd-
Ms. Gibson?
Mm-hmm, yes, I'd like to say thank you to all of our teachers, it's for all the work they do each and every day, certainly appreciated. Um, the band's going to have their spring concert next, a week from Friday at Madison County High School, May thirteenth. Um, last week I attended, since I'm the representative on the board for Fisbeth, which ensures our buildings and workman's comp. Basically, what I got out of that, insurance is going up. And we did get a surplus over the last couple of years of sixty thousand four hundred and three, but the, the rates are going up. Again, Farm Bureau, I'll be there Friday for the fourth grade Ag Day, and I'd like to thank Farm Bureau for hosting this also. And I think that's all I've got.
Ms. Bell?
I would like to tell the students, good luck on the testing. I would like to say thank you to all of the teachers and job well done. And I would like to say also, thank you to all of the employees, I appreciate all y'all hard work. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I want to thank, um, the principals and Ms. Bishop for this, um, end of the year date agenda form, that's really helpful. I want to thank Deputy Lee for being here tonight with the Sheriff's Department, we appreciate our deputies when they come. I would like to, um, wish all the, um, students, um, the best of luck with the FSA. As I conclude with that, um, I would like to thank Farm Bureau for Ag Day. And this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to thank all the teachers and the parapros, all the students, all the students, all the individuals working in the classroom.